All right, good evening. Thank you for joining us for the Cloverdale City Council Meeting. We will reconvene at six o'clock. Would everyone please join me with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the religion of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We had no action report out on closed session. Any conflict of interest declarations from the council? Seeing none. Any changes or deletions to the agenda, David?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Be public comments. Any person wishing to speak on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time in person. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Please come to the podium and state your name for record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Daniel Frankston, Cloverdale. I want to congratulate the police commissioner to be for his appointment last month. I wish I could get here more often, but unfortunately, I've got other obligations that keep me from here. I have been watching closely what the city council's been doing, and I noticed a great deal of criticism of actions taken. And I'm not going to depart from that too much, but I do want to start off by commending the city council. In the past year, I've seen a pickleball court installed. I've seen the basketball courts redone. I see a dog park being constructed across the freeway, and I think you should all be commended for that. Those are things that people of Cloverdale will enjoy for years to come. More importantly, I think the open space that you've designated, the Soda Springs, is something that's going to last for generations, and I think that's really great. But I'm not here for that. I'm here to talk about public housing, affordable housing. In the three years that it took my wife and I to move up here, we noticed the cost of housing went up 50%. We've been here three years now, and the cost of housing has gone up another 50%. One of the components to help keep affordable housing in an area like this are trailer parks. And recently, I was dismayed at the actions taken on Rockwell, where the new owners came in and immediately served eviction notices to cut down that trailer park. Now, I realize that Rockwell is not within the city limits, so there's nothing that you guys can do. I'm very pleased that the border supervisors has taken up action to address the unincorporated areas, but there are a lot of trailer parks in Cloverdale, and I think additional protections need to be put in place. And the things that I would propose are threefold. One is to look at the ordinance with an eye towards tightening the cost of living increases. That's been done in other jurisdictions here in Sonoma, and I think it'd be appropriate for Cloverdale to look at. Another thing that's really appropriate, given what happened at the Gerties, is something that I fought for as a tenant's rights attorney in San Francisco, and that's to require that people that buy apartment buildings, was the circumstance in San Francisco, be obligated for at least a period of five years to operate them as apartment buildings. It's one thing when you've owned property for decades and you just want to go out of the business. That's fine. But if you're going to spend your money to buy an apartment building, you should run it as apartment building. And similarly with trailer parks, if you're going to buy a trailer park, then you ought to operate it as a trailer park for at least a period of time. So I think imposing a restriction that says new owners cannot go out of the trailer park business for a period of time, I think five years would be reasonable, would be something that the city council should look at as adopting. And the last point in that regard is something that's just started to tick up in California, and that's with regards to the characterization of those buildings. There's a lot of trailer parks that have RVs that are present on there. And currently, a lot of RV occupants are getting two- or three-time rent increase because, under the California state law, the RV is not considered a mobile trailer park. And so they're ruled differently, and the courts have been saying, yeah, as long as you're in RV, you can raise the rate. The point being that when you move into an RV park, you establish yourself there, and you should be required to be treated, if landlord is going to treat you like a mobile home, then you should be afforded the same protections as mobile homes.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move forward into communications. See one, getting it right from the start, a cannabis summary scorecard. David, is that something you want to report on?
Mayor, members of council, included in your packet is a copy of what's referred to as the Cannabis Policy 2023 Scorecard. This was included in the packet as communication because it was sent to all members of city council, and we thought it was worthwhile to share this with both council and members of the community. It's no action required, just communication.
Thank you, David. E, student liaison report, yada.
Good afternoon. So, first report is, in these two weeks, a high school is going to be taking the seniors who have signed up to visit the Santa Rosa Junior College to get a look around at one of the schools that they can apply for. Also, today for cross-country, they're going to do their CMC championship to compete against other schools. And for the Washington, last week, they had an award assembly in which they had students with a 3.0 or higher of GPA to get an award. Also, students who were chosen for the student of the month would get an Eagle Award. And lastly, for the Jefferson, this morning, there was a rock and roll to school today, and next week, the PTA will be hosting a Scholastic Book Fair. And on the same week, on Friday, there will be a spirit day, and that theme will be Disney Day.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we're going to move on to E, proclamations, the Native American Heritage Month. Is there anyone that would like to read this? I will myself. Proclamation of the City of Council of the City of Cloverdale, declaring November 2023 Native American Heritage Month in Cloverdale. Whereas, Native American Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by the Native Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas, the First American Indian Day in a state was declared on the second Saturday in May 1916 by the governor of New York. And whereas, what started at the turn of the century as an effort to gain a day of recognition for the significant contributions the first Americans made to the establishment and growth of the US has resulted in a whole month being designated for that purpose. Whereas, in 1990, President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating November National American Indian Heritage Month. And Congress chose November to celebrate Native American Heritage Month for its cultural significance as the month when Native Americans conclude their traditional harvest season. And whereas, November 28, 2008, Native American Heritage Day is first celebrated as a national holiday, proclaimed by US President George W. Bush. And the following year, US President Barack Obama signed the Native American Heritage Day Act of 2009 into law, declaring that the holiday would take place every year on the day after Thanksgiving. And whereas, in 2021, President Joe Biden proclaimed the observance to function as a reminder of the historic and current inequality facing Native Americans, as well as to honor Native American veterans and service members. And whereas, as of 2021, there are 574 federally recognized tribes in the United States, and while many Native Americans reside on reservations, about 71% do not. And whereas, the Cloverdale Rancheria of Pomo Indians includes nearly 500 members who are descendants of the indigenous people from the Cloverdale area and lived upon these lands for many centuries. Whereas, the City of Cloverdale is proud to honor the history and contributions of local indigenous Americans in our community and recognizes the importance of the ancestry and traditions of indigenous Americans throughout our state and nation. Whereas, November is an opportunity to grow our understanding of native culture, languages, rich traditions, and how historical traumas have impacted native peoples throughout the history. And whereas, the Cloverdale City Council encourages residents to visit Cloverdale History Center and their website. It's cloverdallhistoricalsociety.org, the Sonoma Library and their website, sonomalibrary.org/naihm, as well as encourages all to visit nativeamericanheritagemonth.gov. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby declare November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month in Cloverdale, dated November 8, 2023, so ordered myself, Todd Lanz, the mayor. Tonight, we are lucky to have three different tribes here to accept this proclamation. We have Tisha Jones, who is the chairwoman of Point Arena Band of Pomo Indians. We have Miguel Gonzalez, who is the Youth and Wellness Coordinator for the Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians out of Lake County. And we have Max Cordova, who is the spiritual leader for the Dry Creek Band of Pomo Indians. I would like to invite you all forward and say something if you would like.
Hi, I'm Tisha Jones. Thank you. I appreciate the acknowledgement and the invite.
Thank you for being here.
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone. Thank you.
Sir?
Miguel Gonzalez, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, also a descendant of Hoppan Band of Pomo Indians. Very honored to be acknowledged, you know, not for myself, but my relatives, and also my kids. And just very honored to be here today. You know, like you said, there's natives all around here, and we're also a landless tribe over the hill. Just very honored to be here.
Oh. All right. Well, I've been lucky enough to actually get to be part with the Dry Creek with their project on the south end of town, and got to meet with all the elders earlier this year. And some of my best friends are part of the Cloverdale Rancheria, and so thank you, guys, for being here. Oh, would you guys mind if we took a picture with you?
Yada, yada. You're a member of the council. She's trying to hide.
All right. Moving on to F, presentations. F1, new personnel introduction and oath of office of Tanya Galloway. I think this is going to be handled by our future chief, current lieutenant.
Mayor, just a quick introduction. I want to say, first, I'm really delighted that Ms. Galloway and her family is joining us tonight. Really excited that we're welcoming a new member of our Cloverdale Police Department. Thank you to our officers for joining us this evening and our dispatchers. It, we held a recruitment process, and Ms. Galloway was far above the rest in terms of being the best candidate. And what we're going to do tonight is have our lieutenant, our future chief, give the oath of office and welcome Ms. Galloway to our city and our police department. So with that, Lieutenant, if you wouldn't mind, maybe a little bit of background about our newest dispatcher? You, go ahead.
There we go. So Tanya Galloway was born and raised in Hillsburg. In 2010, she moved to Cloverdale, where she has been living with her husband, Justin, and raised her two children, Tatum, who's 12, and Jaden, who is 10. He's a championship football player, by the way. Over the past 12 years, Tanya has the privilege of being a stay-at-home mom to her boys, which has been an incredible experience for her. During this time, she has been fully involved in all aspects of raising her children and has made a conscious effort to be active and present, to be active and present in their lives. Tanya has dedicated her time to various activities within the community. She has volunteered at school, coached youth soccer. And served on the board of Jefferson PTA, who I think is currently the president. For the past six years, in fact, she is the president of the Jefferson PTA and has been for the last two years, currently holds a position on the Cloverdale Little League and Cloverdale Chargers boards. Additionally, Tanya is the current president of the Washington PTA, Washington School PTA. The dedication to and hard work she has put into these organizations has resulted in their recent success and has taken great pride in their contributions. Cloverdale holds a special place in Tanya's heart because it reminds her of the Hillsburg, her upbringing with its small-town atmosphere. She looks forward to the next phase of her life as she embarks on this new career with the Cloverdale Police Department. Tanya will be serving the community in her new position as a police safety dispatcher. And I'll be giving you the oath of office.
Do you need your glasses?
No.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh, you weren't kidding about that.
Over here. I state your name.
Aye, Tanya Galloway.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth.
That I will bear truth, faith.
True faith, yes, you got it. And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance. To the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Please. Work on the family and then your other family, your new family, and then walk them down.
No painting.
This will be on their wall at Christmas forever. The new family in there. What are you, a right turn signal?
Got one more, Mike. Got one more. Counsel is coming down.
Would anyone like to say anything? I just have one thing. Welcome. And, you know, to make this official, we know your name's Tanya Galloway. What is your date of birth? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that? Oh, tonight? Would it be your 40th birthday today?
I didn't know you could blush that much. Love it.
And we're birthday buddies, actually. Today is my birthday also. You have a long way to go to reach my age of 65. So as soon as you get up here, it'd be great. I just want to say, welcome aboard. You're joining a fine organization, and I really get excited when we hire local. You know, it means so much to have Cloverdallians working in Cloverdale. And I really appreciate the hard work that I know you're going to do for us, so thank you.
All right, we'll move on to G for the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council, unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Actually, let's hold off one second, let it kind of clear a little bit. Thank you, guys. Any items to pull for the consent calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Approved, most do approve.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Wheeler is number one. Councilmember Bagby is number two.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lanz?
Aye. House is 5-0. I love they're having a good time. All right, no public hearings, so we'll move on to I, new business. I1, discuss and consider amendment of the policy for the October display of flags, oh, I'm sorry, I read that wrong, outdoor display of flags. I'm getting bad eyesight. To include the sons and daughters of Pearl Harbor survivors' flag and purchase and installation of a commemorative flagpole at City Hall.
David? Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm going to give a little overview, just kind of a history of the current flag policy, and then kind of get to the specific actions that are recommended in your gender report this evening. So to start, just to remind council that the city does maintain a number of flagpoles throughout the city, mostly and largely only on city-owned property. Those flagpoles are located at City Hall, Cloverdale Police Department, the library, the city park, and as well as the Ways for Our Treatment Plant. The US flag, as well as California state flag, are displayed on those flagpoles in accordance with both federal and state law. As you know, from time to time, you've received requests to fly commemorative flags, and we have a history of flying at least two commemorative flags on city flagpoles, and those include the flag to bring attention to violence against children, as well as the Pride of Rainbow flag in recognition of Pride Month. In, or on August 10 of 2022, the city council adopted a formal flag policy regarding the display of commemorative flags. The policy stipulates that in order to enable the display of additional commemorative flags on city-owned property, city council authorization is required. As you may recall, there was a request from Rotary to install a peace flag. And at that time, their proposal included establishing a new commemorative flagpole. The policy was amended to reflect the direction of council at that time to provide for flying of commemorative flags on the designated flagpole at the plaza for display. Unfortunately, following the council's approval, the Cloverdale Rotary Club discontinued, after a lot of work by staff pursuit of their peace flag initiative. And so no commemorative flagpole was ever installed. Because the existing flag policy only allows commemorative flags to be flown on the commemorative flagpole, there currently is no commemorative flagpole. And therefore, it kind of raises the question, is where do commemorative flags fly? The subsequent I apologize, I missed the E in the end of his name, provided a request to the council under public comment to consider adding an additional commemorative flagpole, or an additional commemorative flag to the, the list of approved flags. And that particular flag was referred to as the Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors' Flags. The, the Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors is a, is an organization of descendants of military personnel who were, who were stationed at Pearl Harbor. We all know, December 7th in 1941, there was a tragic event that affected US territory. So the, the intent is to recognize descendants of the members who were, you know, who made that sacrifice for, in, in America's name at the time. The request from, from Mr. Green did include the council to approve flying the, the flag representing the Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors at City Hall during the month of December. So what we're asking direction tonight from, from council is whether to amend the existing adopted flag policy included in your packet is the resolution in which the council adopted the, the most current flag policy. It reflects that there's a commemorative flagpole. It also reflects that the peace flag is, that Rotary was proposing is on that list of approved flags. So we're, we're asking whether to amend the policy to include the flag as it was requested by Mr. Green, and, and likewise, to discuss whether to direct staff to designate a new proposed commemorative flagpole that would be located in front of City Hall as, as the designated location for approved commemorative flags. Again, tonight, we're not asking council to amend the existing policy, really just wanted to seek your direction on the, the, the kind of two pertinent questions is, again, whether to add the, the flag that's requested by Mr. Green to the list of approved flags, and in doing so, address whether council would like to direct staff to install a new commemorative flagpole in, in, at, at City Hall. So I'll pause there. Happy to entertain any questions about the requests. The gender report does provide some information about the potential cost of a new commemorative flagpole. You may recall that previously, the commemorative flagpole was going to be, was going to be funded by Rotary if, if, if the city staff pursues the, or if council directs city staff to pursue, this would be a, a, a city, an expense that, that the city would incur. The estimate in the, in the gender report is just that. We would, would need to do a little bit more homework to identify, you know, in detail the, the, you know, more specifically, the costs associated with installing a new, a new flagpole. I was there, Mayor.
Would you like to go first?
All right, so one of my concerns here, and one of the things I've been thinking about on this, is, is we had, council sat down, and we came up, and we, we talked to Rotary, we had the peace flag approved, which is still on the commemorative flags, and then we were going to get the commemorative flagpole paid for by the Rotary. And now we're at a position, well, now the city, that's been backed out of by the Rotary, and now the city's going to be the one coming up with this. So that's a big concern of mine, and I'm still going to stick with, if the city's going to do it, I, my opinion on the flagpole, commemorative flagpole, is I still like the idea of putting it in the corner of the plaza. It has, in my opinion, has more visibility. There's more, people are down there for Friday Night Live, we've installed new benches in there, people can sit both directions on the benches now, see the flags, and we can put it in the corner over there where we approved before, or, and, and came up with the idea, and I think that if the city puts that out there, we build a nice commemorative flagpole, then that's where we should fly the flags.
Am I up? Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, David, I, I, I think the cost estimate was somewhere, I believe you had mentioned maybe 2,500, under 5,000, though. Was that correct?
That, that, that is correct, Vice Mayor. The customs, I looked at a, a couple different examples of, for the purchase of cost of, or the cost for purchasing a new flagpole, and depending on the final specs, they range from between 2,500 and $3,500 for the purchase. We would have to determine whether, you know, we have the, a staff ability to install it, or if we'd need any, you know, specialized assistance with, 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 you know, digging the appropriate foundation and installing the flagpole. But we hadn't gone through that, that length yet, just because we wanted to seek your direction tonight.
Well, you, you know, just a couple things. First of all, Brian and I are on that committee that is recommending that we bring this forward. You know, as far as the Sons of, Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor, I'm all in favor of that. So I'd like to see that be, be brought forward as being in addition to our flag policy. With respects to the pole, you know, personally, I like it right in front of City Hall. If you, if you stood in front of City Hall, it would frame the entrance to City Hall perfectly. The visibility for the commemorative flag would be fantastic, standing anywhere on that sidewalk as you come up to City Hall, that's the first thing that you see. I, I really think that we need a separate commemorative flagpole, and I think the best location is right there in front of City Hall. I, I get what you're saying, Brian, as far as having it on the plaza, but if you stood across the street and looked at City Hall, and just imagine coming over the same distance as the American flagpole, that commemorative would just look beautiful there. So that, that would be my recommendation. I'd also like to see us at some point, when we bring back the flag policy, to ensure that other city-owned flagpoles will only fly the American, the state, and the POW flag. And any other flagpoles that we may install at a future date will only fly those three flags. Oh, and one last thing on the commemorative flag. We currently have somewhere in this room a Cloverdale flag, which I understand is not suitable for outdoor weather. So I'd like to see us go ahead and with the approval of council, once it's done, come up with what a, what a Cloverdale flag would look like, and that flag should always fly on the commemorative flagpole when other flags are not flown, because this is all of Cloverdale's City Hall. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I personally would rather we use the $3,500 for something else, like maybe for National Night Out, and we could have a big barbecue and bring the whole community together and get some search and rescue horses for the children to learn about, you know, all the different aspects of law enforcement in our county. So that's something that I'd rather see. To me, you know, we had an offer of a free flagpole, and for whatever reason, that fell through, and so I just don't see spending that money on a flagpole. I mean, you know, I think, you know, like different things, people can have vigils for the Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor, and I think if we do end up getting a flagpole, I, like Brian, feel like there'd be more visibility, more people hang out in the plaza than, you know, stand across the street and, and look at the flag. So that's my view.
Because there's two parts to this question, I'm trying to keep tabs. As for the Pearl Harbor flag, is, are you in, for adding it to our policy or not at this point?
I'm, I'm against that flag, because we, we could have a candlelight vigil instead, and I just feel like, let's not spread ourselves all over the place. I mean, the flag kind of represents, you know, what we want on this planet, past and future, and so I'm against the Pearl Harbor flag. A vigil would be fine in the plaza for Pearl Harbor, Sons and Daughters, and that's my view on that Pearl Harbor flag.
I'm, I'm the same. I'd like to open it up for public comment at this point. Thank you, sir.
I'm Richard Green. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, high school council, representative, Go Eagles, and fellow citizens. I'm here to speak in support of my request that the council consider the display of a commemorative banner of a hereditary patriotic organization. The Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors Association is a nationally chartered association whose purpose is to preserve the history and memory of Pearl, of the Pearl Harbor attack that drew the United States into World War II. It is important to me as a connection to my family. Incidentally, there were civilians as well as military people that were on the base with, with that attack. My father survived that historic attack, if I wouldn't be here, and spent the duration of the war in the Pacific. He remained in the service after the war and suffered an unfortunate peacetime demise in the line of duty when I was six years old. Due in part to his untimely death, my mother brought her two sons up emphasizing respect for the potent symbol of the stars and stripes as the embodiment of his spirit and a reminder of the price that he paid on our behalf. Our small family then went on to take part in annual memorial and Independence Day ceremonial observances, very much with my father in mind. That flag of my father is my father. My hope for our discussion tonight is to convince the council that your consideration of Cloverdale's display of the commemorative flag related to December 7th, 1941 attack has civic meaning only if it's flown on a flagpole that displays at its apex the living symbol of the United States. That being said, I am dismayed that the council appears to persist in the idea that introducing a new flagpole will have any better optics or justification than the erstwhile Rotary plan for a secondary pole. The pursuit of that agenda by the City Council was then and is now a wrong-minded effort to strip commemorative banners of their fundamental significance. Please don't do it. This is an opportunity for the council to consider a non-controversial commemorative flag to approve, like the POW MIA banner flown by the American Legion. There's no heavy lifting here, or difficult social matters to consider. The message is simple, lest we forget. Please consider this as a sincere effort to refocus and renew Cloverdale's civic expression of a truly patriotic, patriotic, inclusive connection to the living symbol of our nation's flag. Those are all my written comments, and I have a minute and 51 seconds from three months back.
We'll, we'll give you a few extra seconds, but please don't.
My observation in the last year, I attended the American Legion Flag Retirement Ceremony in May, I was concerned that we were going to have some kind of a kerfuffle in June about the Rotary, of the, the peace memorial that the Rotary had planned. What I've observed about flagpoles in Cloverdale is we don't have it right yet. We've been making some mistakes. If you have two poles, it says in the Boy Scout manual, this one, if, if this, if you're the audience, this one's the American flag, and this one's the California flag. That's what the flag code says. We've been very remiss in our replacement of flags that are faded and worn. The one in front of City, in front of the Police Department was really pretty wrecked for a long time, and the one at City Park was dismal. I know people have feelings about keeping these things fresh and bright, and when Mr. Gore came to look at the new site where, where Cloverdale is expanding, the park flag was one dismal drab thing. What I'm thinking is that if you want another flagpole, you're going to have to figure out how to use it right. And if you're going to use it, please have commemorative flags beyond the American flagpole. It's, that's what makes it an American connection, it's a cohesive, co, and, 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 it's a cohesive thing, it, it needs to be near. And I, I think that putting a second flagpole in front of City Hall is a somewhat balancing affair. I don't think this should be the commemorative flags, I just think that's not right according to my understanding of flag codes. And that's where I'll leave it, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else like to make a public comment?
Hi, as you know, I'm Reese Foxham. Closer? Thank you. I agree with everything Richard said. I think it really, we only need one flagpole, and I think there is nothing wrong with flying commemorative flags along with the American flag and the state flag, period. However, if all of you feel that we need another flagpole, I do not want to see it in the plaza for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's the place that on Friday Night Live, you can sit there and watch families and their kids, and it is a very defined, contained space, just mentally, not even necessarily physically. And if you add a flagpole there, you're adding potential injury, number one. Number two, that flagpole will be next to the bathrooms, and that's the one that's always bothered me. Why do you have a flagpole next to the bathrooms? Doesn't work. I think if you're going to have a second flagpole, in front is the best. I see no purpose in it, but, you know, that's okay. And when you do that, you need to bring the flag policy back and amend the writing and take out some of the things like, the peace flag will fly all year round, certain flags, the children's flag, and the, and the pride flag will fly in the plaza, you have to take the in plaza out, so there has to be some cleanup of the policy. So those two things are my concern. Number one, don't think we really need a flagpole, but if we're going to have one, I think in the front, where people can see it, framing the City Hall, et cetera, et cetera, I think that's the best place for it. Again, I don't necessarily think it's necessary, either by law or even thing, and I like his inclusivity and continuity ideas, because I think that's absolutely right, absolutely. And then, secondly, you need to clean up some of the writing in the policy, and I hope it will come back and be cleaned up. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the?
Dave, Dave Holt, local Cloverdale resident. Happy to be here this evening. Thank you all for being here. Microphone in the bright spot. Simple. What did we do before we had a flag policy with any commemorative flags? They were, there was just two flagpoles out there, and anything additionally went up? One of the flagpoles? No? Oh, only one? Okay. So it went up there. Why do we? work. I think if you're going to have a second flagpole in front, it's the best. I see no purpose in it, but, you know, that's okay. And when you do that, you need to bring the flag policy back and amend the writing and take out some of the things like, the peace flag will fly all year round. Certain flags, the children's flag and the pride flag will fly in the plaza, you have to take the in plaza out. So there has to be some cleanup of the policy. So those two things are of my concern. Number one, don't think we really need a flagpole, but if we're gonna have one, I think in the front where people can see it, framing the City Hall, et cetera, et cetera, I think that's the best place for it. Again, I don't necessarily think it's necessary, either by law or even thing. And I like his inclusivity and continuity ideas because I think that's absolutely right, absolutely. And then, secondly, you need to clean up some of the writing in the policy. And I hope it will come back and be cleaned up. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the...
Dave Holt, local Cloverdale resident. Happy to be here this evening. Thank you all for being here. Microphone in the bright spot. Simple. What did we do before we had a flag policy with any commemorative flags? They were, there was just two flagpoles out there and anything additionally went up one of the flagpoles? No? Oh, only one? Okay. So it went up there. Why do we need to change? I'm for no additional expense. Why do it? And just keep it simple. If people are, I think there was some, I didn't attend all the other meetings, but I did read a few things here and there. I think it's just, let's all just get along and go ahead and raise it up, whatever people, our city council votes for in terms of a commemorative flag. We'll be here to support or not support those flags and let them go up the same spot. No additional cost needed, no more maintenance needed, no falling flagpoles on people on pedestrians would be terrible.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to make a public comment? Richard, I already gave you like three extra minutes. No, no, Richard, that means no. I'm sorry. No. Richard, no, please be respectful. I gave you double, please. Thank you. I appreciate you, and I'm not trying to be rude, and I'm just asking for the respect back. Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't spoken on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back.
Mayor, there is a member of the public, but just wanted to remind that member that we're not taking public comments online at this time. You have to be present. State said on the agenda and online. So unfortunately, whoever is on there has iPad 7. You won't be able to make a public comment via Zoom.
Thank you, Michael. Bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Bagby, would you like to go first?
I think our three public speakers hit it on the head. This is a waste of time and effort. You know, this all started by one person having a problem with pride flag on City Hall. It was a shameful act and it was embarrassing to the city and to our community. You know, once the Cloverdale Rotary learned of the true motive behind this effort, they reversed their support for the project. And I think that tonight we should do exactly the same thing. I'm not gonna vote to spend another penny of the taxpayers' money on this nonsense. It's a, it's a fiasco. And I believe that we should go back to the previous policy, consider adopting the uniform flag code as our flag policy. And I think Richard brought up a very important point, and that is, is that when we're talking about commemorative flags that are so important to our community, I include the Pearl Harbor Memorial flag in that. The flag that commemorates and brings attention to violence against children and the pride flag, those are key members of our community that deserve our support and deserve to fly below the Stars and Stripes and say, this is who we are as a community. This is, we recognize our past, we recognize who's contributing and lives in our community now, and we recognize our future. So that's my direction, and that's what I'm gonna support this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to respectfully disagree with your councilmember Bagby. You know, I think there's more than one individual that would like to see us fly our commemorative flags elsewhere, other than the pole that's designated for the American flag and the state flag. You know, when we fly three flags or two flags there, it is somewhat obstructed with the trees in the bus stop. A second flagpole would definitely bring things more visible. On that second flagpole, I envision that the Cloverdale flag flies most of the time. So, you know, to see them both side by side, rather than having one underneath the American flag, come on, I think that's the way we have to go. And to spend $3,500 or $5,000 is a drop in the bucket. We represent the entire community. And let's face it, some people don't want to see the gay flag flown, period. And others have a problem with it being flown on the American flagpole. You know, we represent all of Cloverdale. Let's do that second flagpole and represent all of Cloverdale. So, my vote is that we accept the Pearl Harbor flag, and in addition, we move forward with the second flagpole in front of City Hall. I agree with Reese, it should not be in the plaza.
Thank you.
I just think we're forgetting that flags are symbols. Like, when we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, we're pledging allegiance to our country, and the flag's just symbolic. And I just feel like, you know, to me, I just really don't want to spend $3,500 plus on this project. I mean, I feel like the city council already kind of decided what we wanted, and it's unfortunate that the Rotary was unable to, you know, come through and fund their flagpole, but I personally think we can spend, you know, $3,500 still is, to me, a lot of money, and I'm sure to a lot of other people. And it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money, and I just feel like I don't want to waste it on the flagpole. And that, you know, I think we should all somehow figure out how to come into agreement and remember that flags are symbols.
Richard, I appreciate your passion for the flag. I really do. As a 27-year veteran, 100% with you on that. And I am in agreeance on the Sons of Pearl Harbor. I'm in agreeance for that flag to be a commemorative flag. However, on the, I think also that the city needs to really look, we're getting a lot, you know, with the commemorative flags. I think that we need to get together as a council and kind of hone in our, a policy, or come up with a policy on commemorative flags and add some restrictions in there. For example, I've done some research on this and looked around at different municipalities all over the place, and they, a lot of them have a lot of restrictions. So, some of them being, if people want to come up, and more power to them to come up and request a flag, but have the background for the flag, have any type of website with the flag that you could send a council prior to a vote. And then, one of the big things also is, so we're talking about community and representing Cloverdale, and one of the big things I would like to see in a policy is come up and have, at least if you're gonna do a commemorative flag, have 150 signatures of your community to see if you can get those people in agreeance. Because right now, I don't know with some of the flags if we would have that. But I would like to see that in a policy, and I'm gonna push for that in a policy. And then, we can make a solid decision on that and come up and say, we've got community support, we have background, we have history, we have this, boom, easy decision. But once again, I commend you for your passion towards the, towards the flag. But my vote still stands, the American flag and California flag, that's a neutral flagpole to me. That's the only thing that should be flying on that flag. And I'm still in agreeance that the flagpole should go around, more visibility in the plaza.
So what I see here is we have a lot of differing opinions, and it's not going to be able to have a direction tonight. So, I, personally, I would like to recommend this goes back to a subcommittee for more direction there to come up some other ideas or something else, unless someone else has a different idea they'd like to bring up?
I think we should vote on this and be done with it. I'm horrified by this council and their position on this. I truly am.
This isn't for a vote. This is to provide direction.
Well, Councilmember Bagby, don't be horrified, okay?
I am utterly horrified by this.
We've already addressed this.
And I cannot believe the direction of the discussion.
Can we please have one at a time?
Mr. City Attorney, City Attorney, am I allowed to finish my comment?
The mayor had recognized you.
I will give you.
Thank you. I would really respectfully request that I not be dictated to about my feelings. I am horrified by the direction that this has taken. This was a waste of taxpayer dollars. At this point, we have spent tens of thousands of dollars of staff time on this. This is a shameful initiative that was reversed by the Rotary because that club was embarrassed by this, once they found out what the true motive was. And I, you know, I realize that the council does not agree with me. The best thing for us to do, the fact is, is that this is a community of moderates. Cloverdale is not divided on issues like this. We are a community of political and social moderates. This initiative is out of touch with the majority of voters in this community. Most people are shocked and surprised that we're even considering something like this. Because this issue where the pride flag is concerned, and this is about the pride flag, let nobody be fooled by this. This is about removing the pride flag from City Hall. That's what this is about for 30 days out of 365 in the year. That's what this is about. Most people in this community are shocked and horrified because this issue has been litigated amongst the majority of voters. And it doesn't even matter to them. It matters to a tiny minority of reactive, very narrow-minded people. And we should go back to the previous policy and include the Pearl Harbor commemorative flag. I am shocked and I'm dismayed, and I have a right to my, to my position, and I will not be spanked or admonished by my fellow councilmembers for speaking my opinion or told how to feel. We are wrong on this issue. We should go back to the original policy, include the Pearl Harbor flag, and move on. Also, we shouldn't be directing how the plaza should be used in an ad hoc manner. Because, you know, a camel, if a camel is a horse put together by committee, this is turning into an iguana. This is absurd. We should be spending no more time on this. Go back to the original policy and include the Pearl Harbor flag. That's the right thing to do. That's what most of our voters want us to do. When we are facing an unprecedented budget deficit in the coming year, this is a waste of time and resources, and we need to move on. We've just heard from all of the speakers that that's what they would prefer. Those are the people who showed up today. And they know better than this council does.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just believe that there's more people that would prefer to see only the American flag and the state flag on that one pole. I don't think it's a waste of money. I think it shows a city council that embraces everyone within our community. Personally, I have no problem with the gay flag flying anywhere on City Hall. But for you to say, or for people to say that because it's not flying on the same flagpole that we don't recognize it is preposterous. You know, I mean, I still believe we should have two flagpoles, one being our commemorative flag and the other one being the state and the United States flag. And that's the way I feel. And it may be irresponsible, but that's how I want to spend $3,500.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only things I want to say is, if we did go back to the policy that we haven't added that flag, that policy runs out December 31st of this month, and there would be no commemorative flags that weren't on a commemorative flagpole starting January 1 as that policy is written. So this policy has to change one way or another to include commemorative flags. I want commemorative flags. I want us to be in agreeance, though, as a community and as a council. Right now, we don't have it. It would flip-flop and be, it would look ugly, just like we do right now. This was not based about somebody that did not want the pride flag flying. This was based on us not having a policy for a flag that had been flown for, as I know it, one year to two years earlier without a policy. And we received emails requesting us to fly other flags for commemorative flags. And if we don't have a policy to control it, and it's a First Amendment right that they have, and there's a reason these people do this, and they were emailing us, and that is what we were talking about. So I brought the policy, to push for the policy last, this year, actually, sorry, still this year. And that is what started this whole ball rolling. It should have never turned into this. This is not how I planned for it to be. And without the Rotary being here to defend themselves, I don't think that we should be saying what they think, or why they made the decisions that they did. Because I've heard differing decisions on what happened. So I don't want to sit there and put words in their mouth. They had an idea, it did not work, and they chose not to do it at the end. So our policy was based around the there flagpole they had planned to put in. So either way, we have to go back and rewrite our policy to make it fit whatever our choices are. But without our council, I mean, we're not in agreeance on anything here, and I think that it needs to go back to a subcommittee and find a way for us to come into agreeance. Or we throw this back onto the, onto the agenda with a vote and have a couple options, and that's what we move forward with at a later date. But with this only being a direction, I don't think we can give good direction unless we're going back to a subcommittee to discuss this further.
Mr. Mayor, I think we do have agreeance on that. I'm hearing at least three people recognize the Pearl Harbor flag to be added to the list. So I think we all agree on that. Now the question remains, do we do it on a separate pole, or do we do it on the current flagpole that we have in front of City Hall, unless I'm wrong?
You're absolutely right. We would be in agreeance on the flag at 3 to 2 at this point, it seems like. So that would be a direction. The location of the pole and which pole is what's kind of up in the air. Does that sound accurate to the council? Trying to find, Richard, please. So what we should do is send it back to the subcommittee and make sure that Mr. Green, Ms. Foxen, and everyone knows when it is so that they can come and give their part in the subcommittee. And we can maybe have renderings and ideas or other things that the city can come up with. I don't know where to go with this one right now.
Well, again, again, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think the subcommittee has chewed on this for quite a while, trying to come up with alternatives. And that's why we recommended that it be in front of City Hall, because some people in the community felt it shouldn't be in the plaza. So we thought, right in front of City Hall, it would get the recognition that all commemorative flags should have. It flies right up there with the Stars and Stripes. So I don't know what else we could come back with, other than not to do it and continue as we're doing it now, which doesn't appease some of the community who want to see a separate American flag and state flag flown on that one pole. So, okay.
I like Brian's idea of getting signatures to, you know, from the public, a certain amount of signatures to even come up with a flag that then we can decide if we want that flag or not.
So that can be something that can be discussed as they rewrite that policy. But as of right now, we have two people that would want a new pole in the plaza, one that would want it at City Hall and one with no change.
I personally don't want to spend money on a pole, but if we have to spend money on a pole, why won't it in the plaza?
I don't know what to say for direction on this one. I mean, I don't want it to die on the dais here. I want it to be something that we can actually come to an agreeance on.
Well, Mayor, I'll try to frame the discussion. And first, I just want to say, I think I have heard quite a bit of difference of opinion about this. And again, the two decisions that we're asking council to provide direction on was, first and foremost, whether council was in support of the request by Mr. Green to fly the commemorative flag. And I think I heard, I think it was echoed by Vice Mayor, there's a majority of council that supports that concept. As the policy is currently written right now, it provides that commemorative flags would be flown on a commemorative flagpole. We unfortunately do not have a commemorative flagpole, or maybe unfortunate's the wrong way to say it, but we don't have one. So it's about how, the question is, relative to the policy, is how do we address a majority of council saying they support a particular commemorative flag without a commemorative flagpole? The only immediate option, which is, I think what Councilmember Bagby was alluding to under the original policy, would be to fly it with the US and state flag. But I think also what we're hearing from council is that there's a desire to keep the flagpole that flies those flags, flies our US flag, flies our state flag, dedicated to that purpose only. So that's kind of the issue, and we're trying to address, is how do we support flying additional commemorative So that's kind of the issue, and we're trying to address, is how do we support flying additional commemorative flag if council is not in agreement that it flies on the flag pole with the U.S. flag and the state flag?
So here's what I think. We don't need to settle this tonight. We have quite a bit of time and can bring this back and put some thought into it. Let it be discussed. We have plenty of time to rewrite this and do it right. I don't want it to be off the hip in a 3 to 2 vote and a heated discussion like this. We need to be more unified with this one. And so I think that what we should do is take our time, figure out that exactly, because if, I mean, it's 2 to 2 to 2, and it's not going, I mean, I don't want it to be like that. So I think that if we brought it back to a sub, we can discuss a little bit further. Both locations are fine on the second pole for me. So I would like to see it, more thoughtful process with it at this point. Like I said, the first commemorative flag that we have to fly is in June at this point. So there's no rush. Pearl Harbor flag goes November, correct? December. Oh, so I am completely wrong. I know the date of that. I just did, I thought this was flown in November, because I thought you said November last month. Makes it a little bit different. Would we even be able to bring this policy back?
We could bring it back at your next meeting in December. I mean, I think one alternative for council's consideration would be if there's support for flying the requested commemorative flag.
This still fits our policy. If we choose this flag, it is still within this year to be flown on the same flag pole for 2023. So we can still use our current policy and do it and still take our time to put thought into this.
Yeah, I think it deviates from policy, but with your direction to fly it this year, and I know our city attorney who is going to weigh in, it would be an exception for this particular year.
The flag policy says that commemorative flag, the current flag policy says that commemorative flags should be flown exclusively on the commemorative flag pole.
I thought that was after January 1.
It went into effect immediately.
Okay.
Bring back a resolution changing that for the remainder of this year. David, can we do that? Alex?
Vice Mayor, at your direction, of course.
Have a copy of the flag policy on here?
I think the link.
Update password on it, of course. Could you please?
I just sent it to you, Mike. My email.
Alex, do you have yours? I can send it to you, Mike.
I can. I can share a screen and bring it up. Here we go. So here's the resolution. Resolution number 0182022, adopted the policy, and the language we are looking at here is Section 6.2, which states that commemorative flags shall be displayed for a period of time that is reasonable or customary, but no longer than 31 continuous days. Section 6.3, commemorative flags shall be displayed exclusively on the commemorative flag pole located on the City Park Plaza and shall not be displayed on flag poles at City Hall, Police Station, et cetera.
Does this have a date?
But it does say, unless an alternative location is approved by City Council.
That's probably the wording, because we put the pride flag up with this policy in place.
So the council could approve flying the flag at a different flag pole, you know, under that authority in Section 6.3? Any of the flags, commemorative flags?
So can we get, do we have to bring that as a direction? Or can we, does it have to actually be voted on?
It will need to be voted on.
That direction to David to bring that back for December meeting?
I think if council wants to provide direction tonight, because it's agendized to give staff direction on the requesters flying of the flag, commemorative flag. If council wants to memorialize a motion to do so, within the authority of 6.3, I think you can give that direction this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the recommendation that we direct staff to bring back a resolution authorizing the flag policy to be changed to accept the sons and daughters of Pearl Harbor veterans to be flown on the current flag pole in front of City Hall through the month of December of 2023. Suffice? Alex?
Yes, that suffices. I'm just looking at how we agendize this tonight. Yeah. It's just discuss. So the motion that has made to bring back that resolution is appropriate.
Can you stop for a second?
A second.
I don't think we need to vote on that, right? We need to just.
It was a motion to provide the direction formally.
All right, well, then we have a motion in a second. I'm going to open up to the public.
Really quickly, I just wanted to clarify that we wouldn't be able to fly anything until that resolution is passed, correct? And that first meeting is until the 13th, which is about half the month. I don't know if that changes your thoughts on that matter, but I just wanted to bring that up to council to let you know that the first meeting is on December 13th.
Mayor, if I can, a question for legal counsel. The item is agendized is to discuss the request and provide direction. Seems the council would have the authority to give direction pursuant to the policy.
The way it's agendized, though, is just to discuss it and to ride that direction back. That's how it's worded in the staff report. The recommended council actions are just discuss requests and then, you know, discuss amending the flag policy.
Can we just bring it back in December to ratify our actions of flying the flag for the month of December and just leave this go? In other words, just fly it and then bring back a resolution ratifying what was done in the past?
Given the circumstance of if that's the will of the majority of the council, I don't see.
We actually did that with the pride flag.
Major issues with that, with a ratification after the fact. If that's the, we should make clear tonight the direction from a majority of the council so that it's clear you're acting, you know, in your capacity through, you know, as government speech, that the direction to the city manager to fly this flag and bring back a resolution to ratify that at the next meeting.
We did that in June, and I think that we can take that chance again. Good? Okay. Is there any other comments? David, are we good direction for, good direction for the flag?
Direction is clear.
As for the flag pole?
So I think there was a motion.
There's a motion on the table.
A second.
So then, any comments?
I'd like to withdraw that motion, Mr. Mayor.
So, or perhaps Vice Mayor may be amending your motion so that it's direction to fly the flag starting in December and bring back a resolution at the first meeting in December to ratify that action.
Thank you, Alex. I'd like to amend my resolution, giving staff permission to fly the sons and daughters of Pearl Harbor survivors for the month of December and bring back a resolution ratifying our action.
Second. Councilmember?
Open up to public for any public comments on this portion regarding the, what is the resolution that has been put on the table? Anyone have any comments on that portion only? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Go ahead.
Councilmember Bagby?
As much as I would like to see the commemorative flag fly in December, I'm going to vote no, because we need to end this nonsense.
Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lanes?
Aye. Passes 4-1.
So, Mr. Mayor, there still wasn't any direction as to the flag policy overall.
It needs to go to a subcommittee, or it's going to die here. So I suggest we bring it back to the subcommittee, and if you want to change subcommittees to a different one, to see if you can get a different resolution.
The nodding from a majority of the council for the city manager to bring it.
The discussion in part tonight originated in the Public Works Subcommittee that was, at least revolved around the installation of a commemorative flag pole. Though there's, you know, it's really council direction. If there's a particular subcommittee, you'd like to see it.
The fact that they've been working on it, I would like it to stay there and work on a little bit further personally. And then if that doesn't work, then David and Alex, you guys can suggest it come to a different subcommittee. That's outing my suggestion. Does anyone have anything else? Anything different on that? Let's put it back in Public Works. If it doesn't work out, let me know, and we can change subcommittees for that. But I'd really like to get a resolution, you know, 2024, moving forward together. Okay. Okay, subcommittee reports. At 7:19, Councilmember Bagby has left the dais.
Excuse?
She is now. All your subcommittee agendas, minutes, and meetings are available on the website, cloverdale.net at the Agenda Center. Any council member reports? Councilmember Bagby's had a written report that she turned in. It will be attached to the agenda on the website. Recently, I just want to, one thing verbally, last week, I was able to be a guest for the Clo Dems, who held a meeting and discussion with Senator Mike McGuire. I wanted to thank them for hosting it. It was very informative. What was nice is hearing our Senate adapting to the problems that we have in California, and their ideas are good. I was very supportive of almost every single thing he said, and that's surprising, as you all know, look at me and smile. So I loved it. Mike's a wonderful person, and you guys were great with your hosting, and so thank you very much for including me, I should say, and being so receptive.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could just say a couple of words. I also had the opportunity to meet with Senator McGuire when he was in town last Monday. And he toured the Veterans Hall with Gene Mazinkowski, Bob Cox, Aldo Sid, and myself, along with Tom Waller. And he was very impressed with how the organization that we have established there runs that vets hall. Richard, I don't think you were there, but it was a real nice meeting with Senator McGuire. Also, I just wanted to remind everyone that Veterans Day, Saturday, we will be having an SOS breakfast at the Vets Hall, starting at 8 o'clock. The Church of Latter Day Saints will be having a barbecue, starting at 11 o'clock at their facility. And then, of course, Saturday evening, the Hillsburg Band will be up in Cloverdale for a free concert at the Vets Hall. So it was a fantastic visit with Mike. I hope everybody can come and see what we've done with that building. Also, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to give a special thanks to Bob Cox and our city employee Craig Johnson. If you go outside, you'll notice that the hometown banners are down for the winter. They've been reestablished all around the inside of the Vets Hall, and that's due to Bob Cox and our city employee Craig Johnson. They do that program working together, and they do a wonderful job. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Legislative reports, any letters? There's nothing listed.
None, Mayor.
So I'm moving on to the city manager report.
Mayors, mayors of council, just a couple of quick updates. First, I just want to share with council that staff is making considerable progress on construction of our new dog park adjacent to the Train Depot. Most recently, the accessible path work was completed. Today, they were installing the railing. I expect that'll be complete before the end of the week. Likewise, the perimeter fencing is being installed this week. We'll expect, we expect that to be completed. Next steps include installation of a new fountain that will have the doggy bowl component to it, serving both human patrons and our canine companions. And let's see, last but not least, we've purchased the perimeter landscape trees that will provide shade in the future. And we'll begin, I think our schedule is expected to start installation of the landscape trees next week. So, you know, once we finalize construction, we will be working with council on a grand opening event for our new dog park. It's exciting to make, making progress on that, on that important project. It's really coming together. Last but not least, the city of Cloverdale is a member of what's referred to as the Sonoma Marin Water Saving Partnership. The partnership was critical during the drought and messaging around water conservation. They have released their annual report for 2023. And here's a copy. I did put a link in last week's newsletter. We'll do it again this week. I'll put hard copies of the annual report in your mailbox. Annual report, Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
Nothing in the report, Mayor?
Nothing from the city attorney. All right.
Mr. Mayor, stop me if you don't like the way I'm going with this comment, but I'm hardly disappointed.
Is this under your communications, under your reports?
No, it's just an expression of my feelings.
Go ahead, I'll stop you if it's out of.
Well, you know, I'm really upset that a council member would get up.
I'm going to ask you right just. I appreciate you. Council direction on future agenda items?
I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
I think I've mentioned this to David, and I just wanted, one thing is, the parks are looking awesome right now. But one thing I did notice, and I want to bring up too, probably the Public Works, is Ferber Park, the lights that are around, the motion sensor lights that are around the bathrooms and the backstop now are incredible. It lights up that part of the park. But with the time change and all that, I noticed it'd be nice to put, if we could, put some lights, or bring it up and put some lights on that bridge coming from the parking lot, a couple of them right there, because a lot of people are walking through there. And then down by the pickleball court and light up the playground also a little bit. There was a lot of kids down there when it was dark and people walking their dogs and stuff, and it would just be a huge addition to that park. So I wanted to put that on the subcommittee for Public Works and put that in the discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Wheeler. And we have a standing item for park improvements on the.
on the Public Works Subcommittee, so we can, we can, under that heading, we can certainly discuss that, your request.
Thank you, David.
Good idea.
Anyone else have a future agenda item or anything?
Mayor, just real quickly on this, I just wanted to acknowledge the request of, the formal, the request that was formally submitted for a future agenda item by Councilmember Morganstern to discuss a policy for proclamations. What staff is going to do is bring forward a discussion item on proclamations at your first meeting in January. This will be done concurrent to the discussion on committee assignments, kind of in preparation for the next year, the next calendar year. And we've also developed, I say we, our city clerk has developed a formal process for proclamations, and we'll be bringing that forward for council's consideration. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I was responding to the request at the previous meeting by Councilmember Morganstern to bring forth a policy to address proclamations going forward.
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Nothing else for the good of the order? Meeting adjourned at 7:27. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 13th. Thank you all for being here.